Going to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting for the Simsbury Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. And the time is 7:02 PM. Okay. So all who can stand, please do so and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to the roll call. Please indicate your presence if you're here. Holly Bem?
Here.
David Bloomey? Or is it John Bloomey? Dave, you're here, right? Just nod your head. Yeah. Aaron Levitt Smith?
Yes, here.
Craig McCormack? Oh, not here. Alan Needham?
Here.
Hello, Alan?
Hello.
William Rice, present. Rich Cortez?
Here.
Julie Eaton?
Here.
And Sean Glenn is no longer going to be joining us as she explained last time. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five regular members in attendance, which means I can seat someone. So Rich, I'm going to ask that you be promoted.
Sure.
Objection, okay, great.
I thought we were doing another workshop, Bill?
That's okay, you know.
So that anybody can participate now?
Yeah, we can do that, but I
I still need to see.
Commissioners in case some business comes up that we need to act upon.
Gotcha.
Okay. Good, I'll just save that little file. All right, next on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, regular meeting. Alan, you want to go through it? I know you weren't here, but.
I won't comment. I'll just leave you some, about that. Okay, regarding the minutes of August 25th, 2020, does anybody have any comments on page one?
No.
Anything on page two? Anything on page three?
Nope.
Anything on page four?
Yeah, line 188. Is it CHFA? It's not CHFA, is it?
The first A doesn't belong there, it's CHFA.
That's what I thought. It's CHFA, it's CHFA, so that, on 188.
So 188, take the capital A out of the abbreviation of CHFA.
Yep.
Good catch. Anything else on that page? All right, moving on to the next page, beginning with line 204.
No, I saw something on 216. I think that our sale on, it's, there are houses for sale, and then that our sale should be taken out. So there are houses for sale that are affordably priced, so she just has an extra "that our sale."
Yeah.
Yep, got it. Line 216, remove the somewhat duplicated words of "that our sale."
Anything else?
Yep, there are houses for sale that are affordably priced. Okay, yep.
Anything else that page?
Nope.
Final page, beginning line 255.
She did an excellent job with these, so there was a lot of discussion.
Yeah, there was a lot.
It was a lot, and I thought she captured it well, really well done.
Very good, Amanda, thank you. Okay. I move to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from August 25th, 2020, as amended.
So moved.
I actually moved it, sorry. I'm looking for a second.
Second, sorry, Bill.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes as amended? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Alan, you're abstaining, okay. So we had five ayes, zero nays, and one abstention. Super, great job, Amanda, thank you. Okay, that brings us to our commission workshop, and as I think Erin was intimating a little while ago, it is a workshop, so all commissioners present, whether seated as a regular member or not, can participate in the discussion. So I think we had gotten, we had made our way through about half of the document. And we were going to pick up the second half tonight, and Mike, were you able to make the changes that we discussed?
Yeah, I just, I apologize to the commission, I didn't, I failed to upload the document, the corrected or revised document through page six to your Dropbox. But I was able to incorporate based on our discussion. I can email the commission later, the revised document.
Okay. So then we should just start with the marked up document we were looking at last week and pick up on page six. Now, Mike, any, any input from the Board of Selectmen as of yet?
No, they're, they're going to receive your correspondence at their next meeting.
Okay.
Which is next week, so we're still waiting.
Okay.
We'll be in a waiting pattern probably till, you know, closer to, closer to our workshop.
So, Bill, and I don't know what we can discuss later, but given the fact that we're not going to see the revised draft, next, in two weeks was supposed to be the public
Listening session, yeah.
Listening session, thank you. So given that, I, I would want to see the draft, and I'd want the, I'd want a an opportunity to review that with my fellow commissioners before we went to a listening session. So I, I would just suggest that we maybe put it off until the first week of October to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row, but I
I think, I think that's, I think that's a good, a good comment. Anyone else, any other commissioners have?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Alan.
I was not here last time, forgive me. I did watch the meeting, and I, obviously I saw the minutes, but I'm just concerned, I think I said this before, that the public will come to this listening session with a different notion of what could take place, what I think will take place. And anybody all hot and bothered by, by getting it under false pretenses. So if it's going to be a discussion of affordable housing, limited largely or entirely by 830G's definition of same, then we should say so. If it's a listening session on affordable housing, see, that's the trouble, Holly's talked about this too, that affordable housing to most citizens is a much bigger topic than 830G. So if, if we're just going to discuss a document that's created because 830J, is it, Mike? It requires it, then let's put that on the agenda, and let's, if we're going to put this out, that that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about an affordable housing plan other than what is described under the statutes. You know what I'm saying?
Oh yeah, I know 100%.
We talked a lot about that last time, yeah.
But I never got a clear sense that that's what we're going to do. Is that what we're going to do?
Yeah, I think, was it Julie that might have said, Alan? I, I think one of the things that came out is explaining 830G and the limitations, right? But that doesn't mean that this plan can incorporate certain things. So for instance, and Michael, you can probably describe it better, but you have a grid on page, I think it's four or five, which shows our other affordable housing options, like the Housing Authority, the, whatever it is, right? So that, but the 830G, right, we get points, it's, you know, the deed restriction, but I think one of the things that we decided is to take a look at wording the document in such a way of what's important when we talk about affordable housing to the citizens of Simsbury, and incorporating some of that into this document, you know, so to speak, while at the same time explaining what 830G is. I, I'm not explaining it well enough, but what, Julie, I think it was your suggestion, right? Maybe you can recap, but try to get input from the community about why they think it's important, right? Isn't that something to that effect? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I'm trying to remember.
I know, because it was really good when you said it.
Two weeks ago. Alan, what we really talked about was a lot about the education on 8, on 830J and G, for just the overarching definition of it. And then when we get to why it's important to the organization or the community, that's when we should because we need to know why it's important to them, like, why is it worth organizing important?
What is it you want to tell us so that we can incorporate some of that in the?
Yes. Yes.
Now that makes sense to me.
So Alan, what happened, if you, if you remember, if you watched the, the meeting, we got hung up on that section about why is it important, because it was very abbreviated. And if I remember correctly, we said, hey, let's see what the townspeople feel.
They're going to rewrite this probably in part after the session. Well, that's, that's good. I like that. Good, okay.
Yeah, and I think we were also talking about having, you know, maybe, maybe a PowerPoint slide with the objective of the meeting and a little definition to try to, you know, set, set the, the boundaries for the discussion.
It's going to take more than one PowerPoint slide. It's going to to explain, to actually show a lot of what we've already gone over as to what the background and the basis and the results and, and the consequences of 830G are, you know, just as we went up.
Maybe it'll take more than one.
Yeah. I think we should take a few moments to make sure everyone understands why we have to, what, what 830G is, why we're doing it, and, and then segue into, well, what else beyond this? This is the law. What matters to the, and we have some excellent suggestions that Mike put down.
And are we looking for more being in a receiving mode, like listening to what people have to say? Or is it more of a dialogue that you're looking for?
I'm hoping it's, we're the receivers of the input.
I'd recommend.
Otherwise, we're going to get into a debate, you know, and it might, it might just, I don't know, end up going the wrong way.
Yeah, kind of, we're here to learn, kind of.
Yep.
Yeah.
It would be wise.
David Bloomey's trying to say something, but he can't, he's on mute.
Yeah, Dave, you're still on mute.
Ding.
There you go.
All right. So one of the things in the beginning is to explain not only the objective of the meeting and what 830G is, but that it is a listening session, that the objective of the commission that night is to hear, is to listen. And I think that's an important ingredient, because as multiple people have said, it's easily, can be easily misconstrued as to what the purpose of that session will be. And so setting the tone and the objective in the beginning, I think, is very critical.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
I know we can do this.
Yeah. Okay. I think we're, I think we're sufficiently on the same page with how we're going to at least introduce the subject during this listening session, so how about we, how about we open up the, the marked up version of Mike's draft? That worked out pretty good last week, or the last meeting where we just kind of went along and people said whether they agreed or didn't agree with what I marked up. So Mike, do you have, how did we do it last time? Did I open it up, or?
Uh, actually, I opened it up last time, but, I mean, it doesn't matter, Bill, if you want to, you want to screen share, I can do that.
What's, is it, what's it, what's easier for you to take notes?
Um, either one. I, I could take notes while, while, while share, while screen sharing it. So let me, I'll do that, just because I have, we pulled, we left off on page seven. And let me do that right now. There we go.
Yeah, okay, looks good.
So just scroll down a little bit.
I think that's where we stopped, right?
That is.
Yes.
I'm having trouble reading that. It just doesn't seem clear to me. I'm not sure you want to use the word "a greater diversity of the housing market." When people talk about diversity, they, they have a different thing in mind.
I think we said that too, I think, right, Rich? I think that was your thing. I think we, we're going to take that out, right?
Oh, you've discussed this?
Yeah.
No, just that term, that term came up before.
Okay.
Yeah, we agreed that that needed to change.
Yeah, and I think that the, what we hear about what's important will help feed why it would actually be helpful. Because we've been very limited in the 2017 plan, the findings for that sentence.
Will the public, the public will not have this draft, correct?
Oh, I'm hoping they will.
No.
That's why we're doing this.
They're going to have the rewritten draft bill. They're going to have
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, well, yeah, yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, legally, if we have a meeting on this for a listening session, we have to put the draft out. So, yeah, they'll, they'll have access to it prior to the meeting.
Well, can we change diversity into something more like a?
Didn't we decide that, do we actually need this the way it is? I thought we had.
We, we finished page six, we didn't discuss page seven last meeting.
Okay, so we have a little bit of precedent set here. Look in the left-hand column. There's, there's an excerpt from our Plan of Conservation and Development.
That's what I'm looking for now, you know.
Yeah, the housing diversity term comes right from the POCD.
Page is that, Mike?
Off the, out of the POCD? I, I don't have it in front of me. It's out of, it's out of the housing chapter.
That's interesting that we put that in. We didn't think about how diversity.
Hmm, well, times have changed.
Yeah, no, that's true.
I would say, if you think of it, you know, in 2017, saying housing diversity took a different meaning than in 2020. And you could see, like, some of the, some of the, the, you know, such as diversifying for elderly, first-time homebuyers, like, all that is out of your POCD, which was what you identified for housing diversity at the time. Once again, different world.
Maybe it isn't the diversity of housing, but the diversity of the homeowners. Now, that, looking for, because that's what we're talking about here with that diversity, first-time buyers, elderly, and financially people who don't have the financial wherewithal. So, so it doesn't have to refer to the diversity of housing, because that implies different kinds of housing for different kinds of people. This is called, we're looking for diversifying the population
There's a range in prices in the housing stock.
Yeah, I, I think that blue sidebar there actually is talking about diversity of different types of housing.
Yeah, I agree with you, Rich.
We, we are not getting, this, this whole document never gets into race or anything like that. This is only talking about people's economic means and the types of housing that they can get into in Simsbury, which some are going to be, you know, Section 8, some are going to be affordable housings in new developments. It's going to be different types of housing that we're talking about here, not the people.
Guys, I found the reference in the POCD, and what, on page 90, on Section 10.2, the wording in the POCD is actually, "Seek ways to help meet the diverse housing needs of present and future residents."
Right.
That, that works really well.
Yeah, that does.
Ways to help meet, or meet the diverse housing needs, diverse housing needs of present and future residents. That gets away, that explains it.
So actually, Holly, if you put that in, would increase, instead of options, the diversity of need for first-time buyers, elderly, or individual, you could somehow weave that into that first sentence. Instead of options, you could put what you just read. Diversity with the need, right, and instead of
I mean, I'm visiting the goals for, the, I, I just wanted to replay diversify, diversifying housing.
Right.
I just wanted to say, goals to help meet the diverse housing needs of present and future residents.
That's clearer.
If you're right out of the POCD, page 90, the heading for Section 10.2.
So say that again.
Well, here it is, just so you guys can see it.
Yeah, but just, yeah.
It's, if we were going to just throw it into the sentence and say, "Goals for meeting the diverse housing needs of present and future residents."
I like that.
I, that's much better than, than
It's right out of our book?
Yep. Hallelujah.
Hey, no, the, I, I like it. I, I'm having a little, a little second thoughts about the word, or the, yeah, the word "goals." I don't think, I don't think we quantify anything, and to me, it is, is, you know, a quantifiable metric.
Yeah.
I think we're really talking about options for ways to help
In that header, it was actually "ways." They said, it was, it was an action sentence, so it said, "Seek ways," but it said, "Seek ways to help meet the diverse housing needs."
Yeah, but it's funny, in, in the blue box to the left, I don't think any of that really is associated with 8-30G.
No.
Oh, no, this is a, this is our POCD. This is the segue into, okay, we covered 830G, and, and remember, it ended with, but, you know, there are ways, it's not just a point system, there are other ways to meet the needs to, in, in sort of a moratorium. And we took that part out, but that, this was the segue into, here are the other things we'd like to consider in this document.
So I think, I think we need either, you know, stick with 8-30G flavor, because here, to me, this is, this is deviating from it. Even though, Mike, I think, Mike, I think the examples that you, that you presented did, did qualify as the affordable housing under 8-30G. But those, those items to the left
Don't.
That's not 8-30G, but it, you know, if we want to expand, you know, I I thought we
To the left, it says it, it doesn't claim to be. It's a
Oh, I know, I know.
Development and
But we're going to, we're going to go to great pains to explain to everybody that this affordable housing plan is a requirement of 8-30J, which is affiliated with 8-30G. And then we're going to get to this part, and it's going to talk about, you know, diversity of housing needs.
So let me throw an idea in there. What if this section actually talks about the different options for meeting affordable housing? Which can deal with the different real estate types that we're talking about in this section. So wouldn't it wouldn't be a crazy total remake? It would address the first part, it wouldn't add anything that's outside of 830GJ, because we're still talking about how we meet those afford, those, those affordability goals by having the housing options available. Does that make sense?
No, not really.
No.
Okay, so in the beginning of the document, remember, we originally were only talking about deed-restricted properties, right?
Right.
But under 830G, there are other options to meet your affordability goals in a town, right?
Yes.
Okay, so
Well, not under 830G, right, Mike? I thought it was
So, so
Yeah.
There are, there are, there's a point system that goes to your 10%.
Right.
If, if a development is, is, okay, we'll back it up. If a community has less than 10% of their housing stock is considered affordable, meaning deed restrictions, the mortgage assistance, you know, federal assistance, et cetera, that whole list of, and we're back, I think Rich is right, we brought it up on either page five or six. If you're above 10%, you're exempt. If you're below 10%, then, you know, a developer has the ability to to propose an affordable housing development. However, the only reason why it's considered affordable housing development is because there's a portion of the, of the development is deed-restricted units. And the other thing, the other thing too, from, from a land use perspective, the deed, the deed assistance individuals, those people of Connecticut Finance Authority, USDA loans that, that qualify, you know, the other sort of segment, we can't develop a regulation to promote those things. They're given points towards our 10%, but literally, we're talking about people, because, you know, me Rich and I, we'll, we'll go down to the bank, we'll both apply for mortgages. Rich gets approved for a USDA loan, so he gets the affordable, government-assisted loan. I make too much money. I can't qualify. But the, you know, Rich got a, Rich got approved first, he buys a house. Then it counts towards, but you can't, like, regulate on that. I think that's, that's the main difference. The, the deed restrictions were the attempt of 830G to say, here's a way to get to 10%. But as we know, in order to do that, you have to approve more units.
Right, and understanding that, do apartments have no value in the, this is the part where I fall apart and I don't really understand. How does the rest of the formula work? What are the other options? And are those things that we should be developing as part of the POCD?
So it, there's not a difference between if the unit is owned or rented. So for example, and let's say that we, you know, you want to approve an apartment building and, and 10% of the the rents for the units will be deed, deed restricted, it would still qualify as an affordable unit under 830J. So there's no difference. The, the key, the key is, in that sense, now we're talking deed-restricted units, that they have a deed-restricted units.
Okay, so I, as if, if, let's say that the town encourages people to build three-family homes on 10 different lots downtown, easy walking, the whole bit, right? So we get these houses, they're three-family homes, walk-ups, and they get rented out at through a government program, perhaps Section 8 or some other program. Do we get credit for those rentals?
Yes, if they're, if they're rental-assisted or deed-restricted, we would get credit. So in the case of Section 8, yes, we would get, we'd get some value on the point system towards our 10%. If they're deed-restricted, it's a higher value if it was a new development.
Right, so what I'm saying is, it seems myopic to me that we're, seem to be concentrating on deed-restricted things only, and that there may be other options that we can take advantage of and should be enumerating in this second part of the document. Now, if I'm mistaken, tell me, but that's sort of the road that I'm seeing.
So I just, I just copied to the chat window the So I just, I just copied to the chat window the paragraph 6 and 7 from 8-30G, which defines how the points are assigned.
Where, where's the chat window? Sorry.
It's Andrew's, yeah, soon.
It's where? Oh.
But I, I think I'm, I'm with you, Rich. I think, I, I hear what you're saying is, we don't need to exclusively come up with potential solutions that address just deed restricted properties.
Yeah, okay, I see. Right, this makes more sense to me. So if you're going to go into a section that's called, well, whatever we're going to end up calling it, right? But we understand what we mean when we say diversifying the housing market. The actions we take under that section of this document should go to support the different things that we're reading here in Section 7. Because I think that's where, through the P O C D, those are, those are the types of development that we are trying to encourage, if I'm not mistaken.
I think that's what we need to, we need to define or decide.
I agree with you, Bill. I think what's to the left in the blue box is P O C D. I don't think it's related to 830G and what Rich is saying. I think we stick, I like what Rich is saying. I don't, I would not label this diversity. Or how, I would, I would take that all out and somehow move into the housing stock that we have that's affordable. I don't know how you label that. And then go into, I mean, i- into these discussions, but I, I think you're right. I think this confuses it, because that's not what this is. But I do think we should show the other affordable housing options, because it's not all about deed restriction. And what, what we put in the blue box, how we rewrite that, I, you know, I'm not sure, but.
So does a commission, does a commission want to add in kind of what Bill just sent in the chat? The whole point system from 830J?
Yeah, and I'll be honest, I thought that that was going to be part of the rewrite that you were doing, because you had the grid on, like, I think it was Section 2, that talked about all of our stock. So I might be mistaken. I thought that was already going to be covered.
Yeah, I didn't think we talked about putting in the point system.
Yeah, we didn't talk about explaining all of it, but it wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's a lot of, a lot of explaining.
It is.
Yeah.
It's just a lot of
I think what we do is, I, I'd like to park the, the, the blue box on the left there for a little bit. I'm not sure, I, I think it belongs in here somewhere, but maybe not adjacent to the, the options for developing qualified, what do they call it, units? Right, so Mike, you take Ojekian for, for example. What, what's special about that one?
Technically, that's a low income housing development.
Okay, so. But that does qualify towards the count of
We're getting
that makes up the 10%.
We're getting points on that one.
Getting points on that one, okay. That, okay, that was on 8-30G.
Nope.
Right. All right, what's the next example that you have?
I think my, on the next page, and sorry if I, the next example was garden homes. There's that rental development had affordable units. 18 affordable units that are there.
Yep.
So just another example, not an 830G application, as you noted.
What's in the blue box to the right here?
Uh, we're on page 8 now, on the, on the blue books, the blue box on the side, that's, uh, right out of statute 82I, that's inclusionary zoning.
Okay, that was just, okay, yeah.
It's just giving, giving example of what's said earlier in the body of the, of the, this page, talking about inclusionary zoning. What is it? What, where is it from? And inclusion, 82I also, you know, there's two parts to it. One is, you could develop a, a regulation that has basically a density bonus for for the, for the, for the creation of more affordable housing units. The other is, and the town in New Canaan does this, they assess a, a fee on every single building permit application that comes through. You know, a $20 affordable, affordable housing fee. That fee goes into a fund of which the town uses to build affordable units. In this case, they, you know, they have a housing authority, some of ours. They expanded their housing authority based on the fees that came in pursuant to 82I.
Just looking at Essex's plan right now. They, they clearly say that in their, on their background page, "The document is intended in part to satisfy the state mandated requirement." And, and that's 8-30J. While clearly demonstrating what Essex can do to encourage the creation of affordable housing units so that it does not remain exposed to the 8-30G appeals process. So they're, they're talking about exposure to the
Yeah, it's not a good look.
Don't go there.
Yeah, I don't like that one either.
Because, because, Bill, to your point, that kind of also talks about how we agreed to remove the moratorium out, section of the moratorium.
Yeah.
And it kind of just, it kind of just speaks to, I, I'm shooting for 10%, you know, the C student, and let's go with that.
So I'm looking at Salisbury's, and there seems to be, our draft seems to be mirroring a lot of what they are. And pardon me for not remembering, and they're all very similar. So they talked, it seems like they beefed up their Section 2, which is, "Why is it important?" And they had it listed out with like five reasons why it's important. And then built out a little history about each one of them. Like, current lack of affordable rental units. And then they talked about what Salisbury had and what statewide was. So they just made a whole bunch of facts. And then their goal section was really, they put out a goal out there. And it's, you know, "We need to do a better job of diversifying our housing options." And our goal is 75 affordable housing units over the next 10 years. They put it out there and stated a goal. And I don't know if that goal of 75 helps them hit their 10%, but they put it out there.
Mike, would you roll this page so we see the top of it again?
Because we're talking about goals.
I don't know if I want to put a number, but.
So I'll just say, business 101, you want to hit a goal, you put a number out there and you work towards it, and you try to hit it.
Yeah, I wouldn't know how to even figure a number out. I mean, I don't.
What's the gap between where we are today and 10%?
I don't know.
Mike, that's all you. That's high mathematics on you.
I may actually have that. Let me scroll on to the next page.
But the thing is, different, different situations are scored differently. So it's, it's not a perfect answer. It's going to be, you know, a, a matrix of solutions.
Yeah, so to answer your question, Julie, we need to approve 481 or have 481 more affordable units to meet.
Yeah.
You can't.
So.
And not build anything else.
That's, that's the other thing too. That's based on our current number, which obviously, if we add just other market rate units, that number's going to change.
And maybe Salisbury, I, I bet that number is, let's just do 75 and start. I doubt that, that's going to help. I mean, they're not going to reach the 10%, I'm sure. But maybe that's what they did. They just picked a number and said, "Let's start small." I, I don't know what their rationale was, but.
I think, I think what the tricky, the tricky part about this would be is, you're comparing yourself to Salisbury and Essex, which are two communities that are not, they still have room to grow. Versus, we are, we are very limited.
Yeah.
We're approaching buildout. All things considering. So we're going to be, you know, very different situation in a sense to put a target on number of units. It's, it's, it's a harder number to come up that actually
I agree. I, I agree.
Well, they're all, they're whole, to your point, Mike, their whole how is through development.
Yep.
Right.
Right. And our how will have to be very different and creative, like you've done. But I do think that there should be some type of mind, but is there should be some type of goal that we're marching to?
Bill, Bill, do you want to, I mean, is this a good point, maybe to segue to page 11 and go to the goals? And then come back to this portion of the plan?
Let's try it.
Okay.
You know, I don't, I don't have, I don't have any objection to putting in goals, as long as we have numbers that go along with it, to Julie's point.
So here's some of the goals that I, or ideas, let's say, concepts right now, that we put together. And if anyone wants to add or subtract anything in here.
Well, we're not doing a subcommittee, correct? The first one?
That was just, that was just a suggestion a lot of community, communities are doing.
Oh, I see.
We don't have to do that. But I, I, I kind of tried to pick up themes from everyone else. What, what's everyone else doing in their plans? And unfortunately, you know, we, we have three plans to look at in the state.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't know if we need a subcommittee. I don't know what other people think.
No, I think we're doing fine as the, the whole committee.
Yeah.
Well, guys, when we first went over this, when Mike first presented this, I was under the impression that we might need a, a subcommittee to work beyond this plan to actually work on some of those action items, amend, identify, investigate, explore, and explore. Those are action verbs and, you know, once we write this plan and, and say, "Okay, let's work on the next thing," we might need a subcommittee that continues this work.
You might end up with a committee that's got nothing to do with the planning commission too.
I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm just saying that they work on the things that the planning commission has said should be worked on. There's a lot of action items under here and
Yeah, okay.
Most of us are going to be moving on to the next parts of the plans that need rewriting.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think that the goal is really to achieve, you know, to strive to achieve the 10% number. Okay, but I really don't like, that, that seems like such a cop out. In, in the grand scheme of things, you know, if, if the intent is to really provide options for, you know, of, um, uh, different, what do we, what was the term we're going to use instead of diverse, different?
Diverse housing needs.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna use different word than diverse, I think, but.
Variety.
The various housing needs, really.
Yeah, variety. That's what I
The, the, the housing needs of present and future residents, okay. That's really the goal. If that's not the goal, then we, I think we need to, we need to come to terms with what we're really trying to do. If, you know, if we're trying to make a marginal improvement on the number of defined residential units that qualify under the, the guidelines. Okay, maybe we, maybe we want to make a 10% improvement. Maybe we want to make a 5% improvement. Maybe we want to go to 15% of, you know, residential units qualifying under the, under the statute. But Mike, that's really what I'm expecting to hear from the Board of Selectmen. Because for me, you know, I'm an old stodgy guy. I'd say, well, let's try to improve the situation by 5% and see what happens.
Bill, are you objecting to these specific goals under recommendations?
Uh, no, not at all. I, I, I don't think, I don't think they're goals, the ones that are on the screen now. I think those are action items.
Yeah.
Yeah, recommendations is a good word, yeah.
Now, we got
I think these are, these are definitely things we should include is that this is what it's going to take to get to any
No, yeah, if, if that does move the needle, I'm all for it.
So Bill, in, in the world of setting goals, if we need to add 481 affordable units, as it stands right now, never mind that it's going to, other units are going to grow, change that number. I would think that you need a long-term goal, not, not anything short-term. This is not something you do over two, three, four years. This is like 10, 15-year plan, minimum.
Yeah, agreed.
So that's a completely different animal on the goal scale.
So maybe there's a short-term goal and a long-term goal.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because again, if you only do a short-term goal, they're going to look at it like you're just being the C student, just trying to get to where you got to get to and forget the rest. So it really needs to be a long-term with, with road, road mark, so to speak.
What's, what's the end game?
I don't know that the 481 is ever achievable.
We certainly don't want to develop a plan that's not achievable. That, that's rule number one.
No, but, but then we'd have to, we'd have to admit upfront that we can't get to 481. I'm not sure we want to do that either.
Right.
Can I, can I ask a dumb question that I brought up last time? If, I mean, it, it doesn't mean that we have to create new stock, because when you create new stock, then your percentage grows and then you have to create more new stock. If, if all of our existing homes that were in the affordable price range for the 80 percentile and the 60 percentile, we have more than 400 of those and
But those won't fit the definition.
Well, that, that's a question I want to ask. One of the definitions was, um, of loans, you know, of, of government loans. Let me find it. It USDA, the, the Connecticut one is HUD, I mean, any of those other, um, FHA, is, is that also part of this?
Well, I don't know if you
Mike is, is
So here's, here's, here's the catch. It's all about the individual at that point.
Yeah.
So you have to have a population that qualifies, and that is very tough. So you, you may have a housing stock that qualifies, but you, 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 it's going to be tough to have a, 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 a population. You're talking about 40, 481 individuals that would qualify. And I will tell you, speaking as an individual who tried doing this many years ago, applying for USDA loan, it's tough.
Oh, I didn't, see, I didn't know. I, I don't.
It's not, it's not a guarantee. It's tougher going for that than your conventional loans.
Oh, I didn't know there was some way we could help this process.
Yeah. Well, actually, so there is one option and, and it's, it's a question for the Department of Housing. So we have that community block grant program that was started in 1984 for Terrafill. And it was the housing re, housing rehab loan program. Um, we have about $200,000 in program income in that funds. They have not been touched since 1990. We just, I, I, we just discovered this in the past three months. One of the goals, uh, goals and object, uh, national objectives um, from the community block grant, uh, program is, uh, providing for affordable housing to individuals making 80% or lower the area median income. An action item to a limited clientele, which is permitted under the national program. It just, I'd have to ask a question whether it's, whether it qualifies to the action plan for the state of Connecticut is, um, down payment assistance. If so, what that could translate is, is we could do loans, again, just like we did in the eighties, not for housing repairs, but for down payment assistance, which that would assist a population of limited means.
I know some families would immediately help. Yeah.
But it would only apply mo-, you know, I, I, I don't know if it's going to apply to townwide or it's going to be Terrafill only. Because the housing rehab program was specific to, to Terrafill. Um, and that's a question for the Department of Housing. It's, it's, and it's really, like I said, reviewing the two plans, but that's just, that's an idea.
Uh, that's a really good idea if the money's just.
Yeah. Yeah, these are the kind of things we want to see.
Well, I mean, that's why, you know, my last, my last, let's suggestion, recommendation, explore using program income from in a, a community block grant program for creation of additional affordable housing units. Now, I mean, granted, you're not building new, that new, you're providing assistance. So it gets into that, that, that difference of deed restricted versus individuals. A deed restriction comes with it under the community block grant program. So for 30 years, that unit's going to be deeded as affordable to people making 80 percentile of the area median income.
So.
That's, but that's a federal program.
See, if that, if, if I was an individual and I could take the two grand, but I have a deed restriction, I wouldn't take it. Because what you're doing is you're limiting my ability to make money on the only piece that I can grow equity on.
Yep.
But that's what 830G is. That's why it is such a sucky, stupid law.
Well, yeah, but it is what it is. But as an individual, you have the option to not take that loan and potentially still get the property, right? Anyway, I won't go into any further, but.
I mean, we have to, we have to meet 830G and right now the biggest vehicle that's, that, the, the law states is deed restriction. Which is, I agree, Rich, is a horrible thing. It's, it's the worst thing you want to do to people who need affordable housing. It, it's, it's a horrible, horrible thing to do to people.
Let's bury my social commentary.
Let's be, yeah, you know, remember the housing market hasn't been all that lucrative in the past 10 years. Um, you know, if this, if this plan, uh, enables a, a, an individual or a family to get into a, a unit that they normally would not have, that might be incentive enough for them.
Like, like to explain to me how, uh, uh, how deed restriction helps a family move into a house that they are qualified to buy financially. Because again, at this level, at the $275,000 level, there are lots and lots and lots of houses. And I don't see how the deed restriction is going to allow someone to move into that house that couldn't afford to buy a house at that price anyway.
Well, so let me just say that the down payment, I see down payment assistance programs all the time. What they do is they allow someone who's qualified for whatever X loan that goes with it, right? Qualified for it, but they don't have the funds to close, essentially is what's happening. And they can't meet a couple other financial markers in there. So this down payment assistance program, that's what they call it. But what it is, is they give you cash towards buying the house that alleviates those issues when you get to the closing table.
Okay. So Rich, I was actually just referring to 830G.
Oh, sorry.
And, and I don't, I still, I still don't see what benefit it gives anybody to have a deed restriction, restricted house at a price level that doesn't in any way, shape or help, any way, shape or form, help you actually qualify to buy a house at that price level. Because it's already designed for your income.
You know what? Somebody bought a house that was deed restricted and six months later just sold it privately and, and made a bunch. What a, what a nice deal that would be.
You know what, can I, you're assuming that these deed restrictions are because the house wasn't that value anyway.
You know what, though?
We don't require that. The law doesn't require it. You can build a $275,000 house and say, oh, now it's affordable because we'll deed restrict it.
So Bill, can I, I'm not sure. I mean, this is a nice, um, discussion, but I, I think it veers us away from the plan because the fact of the matter is it is what it is. We're stuck with the law. So, and I know, I know I'd like to be able to get through the plan so that we can see it and then do this listening session sooner rather than later. So I don't, I just wanted to throw that out. I, I hear what you're saying, Holly. Yeah. So anyway.
Well, the, the question.
Well, that's why, I mean, I guess, uh, Erin, the point I was making, these recommendations are not just 830G, but they are what more of us, more, not more people consider affordable than merely deed restriction.
Yeah. I see where, yep. Go ahead.
Well, I would recommend we go through these recommendations, excuse me, the goals, but I think they're recommendations. Go through them one by one. Do we agree with it? Is the timing, is the target completion date realistic, you know, and so can we just knock them off one by one to see if, if we agree with them?
We can try that.
Good. The only thing I'm struggling with, and I, I can get over it really quickly, is if we talk about establishing an affordable housing subcommittee, I think there should be, that's an action, but that action should produce a result. Right? You can have an affordable housing committee, but I think we need to get to the point of what they're going to do.
I wouldn't have this as the first item.
I wouldn't either.
Because it, it diverts, it, it gets the tension right off. And it, you know, the, 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 the normal thing in terms of deferring action is, oh, we're going to form a committee. Uh, in this case, a subcommittee.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't.
It works at the end after you read all the things that committee's got to do.
Yep. And I, I agree with that. I just think like, even if you move on to the next one, develop an affordable housing ordinance. To what end? Investigate inclusionary zoning regulations. To what end? Think we need.
Julie, 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 the second one, we actually have to do that. The town will, will have to develop an affordable housing ordinance. It's a requirement of the community block grant program. So we're already on the hook. We have to, we'll be doing that in the next calendar year or so.
I think that's awesome.
That's part of, part of our federal funds that we receive.
Okay. So, you know, I'm just doing my math and trying to figure out like, if we do that, then what does that give us from stock? That, that's all I'm trying to get at. I'm not disputing the, the idea. It's a great idea. I'm just trying to quantify.
Well, hey, Mike, is, is the ordinance the, like, like the, uh, the, the end product of the plan? Are, are they, are they tied at the hip? You know, uh, should the ordinance follow the affordable housing plan?
Well, that's a good point. That's a good point. Uh, technically, no. Because, uh, you know, the affordable housing ordinance is directly related to state federal funds. This is, this is just a statutory requirement, but, um, I think it would be good planning that the two, hence why I put the planning commission as one of the responsible parties to mirror each other or that any ordinance that develop incorporates some of the concepts that are raised in this plan.
Yeah. Okay. So the term affordable in box two, is that the same definition as eight dash 30G?
Yeah, I would say, because you're making, you know, um, you're going to make u- units available, I'm assuming to the 80 percentile area median income individuals.
Uh huh.
So. So, yeah.
I would change the sequence under the responsible party. I'd put Board of Selectmen at the top. Planning Commission next, Town Staff third.
I think Town Staff.
I'll second that.
Well, it is a responsibility of the Board of Selectmen.
Yep.
That's, Mike, am I, am I following you correctly? That is, is required, you know, and, and the question I have to you is the January 2022, is that a realistic and is that the deadline date?
Uh, I went with, it, it could, it could go out to January 2023. I went 2022 because I'm assuming we, we may have our project complete at that point when we were doing closeout with Department of Housing. Once we start doing closeout, we're going to have to start doing our actions that are on our plans for that grant. So this is something that.
Require public hearings, approvals at different levels. And it doesn't surprise me that you put 2022. I just scratch my head and say, is that doable? It's.
It could be changed to 2023 to make it, make it a little more breathing room, let's just say.
Well, while we go down like Dave suggested and, and, uh, let's skip the first two. And, uh, okay, the third one. Now, Mike, are these summaries of items that you had on the previous pages?
Yeah, because inclusionary zoning regulations is mentioned.
Yeah, from page nine.
Yep.
Mike, the zoning commission is revising, they are consolidating, whatever word you want to use, uh, the zoning regulations. Are they at all looking at this? Has this come out of nowhere for them?
Uh, well, we are going to look at the workforce overlay housing zones. That's in the next phase.
Does that fall under the inclusionary zone zoning?
That is, that actually is considered inclusionary zoning. Cause you have density bonuses for the creation of affordable units.
All right. That's a move in the right direction.
And, and Bill put in the 2021 question mark. Again, this is something to a different commission and putting a date on it that January 2020 seems, um, aggressive.
Well. Well, it, that can change.
Right. That, that's, yeah.
I, I would, I, I almost would, I almost would suggest to the commission is not so much looking at the target date for completion, but the priority higher, low, and then we can have the discussion on, you know, what's realistic. Cause I mean, all these num, all these dates, I'll just flat out say that, I'll, any date can change.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the zoning commission, uh, has already taken at least one step towards inclusion, inclusionary zoning. Uh, the next one we have amend, re-sub, is that re-subdivision regulations to require, uh, percentage of new developments to be deed restricted affordable units. So that would be something that we would craft and, um, you know, send through the, uh, approval process. What do people think about this one? So now, now we would be legislating or regulating, uh, independent even of, uh, eight dash 30G, any subdivision application would have to have a percentage.
Mike, what other communities do this?
There's some Fairfield County communities that are doing this. I, I, I don't recall offhand. Uh, maybe, but, but it's some of the, lower Fairfield County communities are doing this because they have, you know, they're, they're a lower percentage than us and have been bit by several 830G applications. So this was an attempt to control the number of market rate units that their commission is approving on a yearly basis. And the, the, and really the attempt is, is in actions such as this, like I said, it limits, you're not, instead of having an 18 uh, unit subdivision at market rates, now you have, I don't know, 10%, 20% of that development being set aside as affordable. So it's taking the sting off of your new development as it relates to your attempt, to your percentage of affordable units.
Developers would resist this strongly.
I haven't shared this concept with any developers in, in the area at this point.
Okay, thank you.
There are, I will, I will tell you.
Do they bother us? I mean, we have enough homes here. I, I have no problem telling people, hey, we got a great town. If you want to build in it, you've got to build a percentage of affordable stock. We're not hurting for developers to put another subdivision in.
And we don't have any applications right now, Holly.
Yeah.
As I was talking to people before I got elected to this particular commission, one of the things that I heard repeatedly was how people's feeling that Simsberry was a difficult town to do business with. Recognize that this certainly adds to that. Now, I'm not, maybe developers are more willing to go along with it. I don't know. I'm not a developer.
But David, is it a problem in our town that we don't have enough development? Most people I talk to don't care if we have any more development at all.
Right. Okay. Then that's going to really hurt, hurt the ability to, uh, with, with what we're considering now.
Bill, that makes it all the more important that if people are going to add to the stock levels, they add to the affordable housing levels.
Yeah. Yep.
At a rate.
Otherwise, I, I don't see why we even need any new houses. No.
Mike, do you know what percentages those other towns are using in their ordinances or whatever they put in?
I don't have that number offhand. I could, I could look it up for you.
Yeah. If you could just get two or three of them, just to give us an idea of what the span is there. Cause I mean, you, otherwise we're just plucking out of thin air.
Yeah. 1% is a big difference than 10%.
Oh, yeah.
10% seems like a good number because that's the percent that we're supposed to dish up for 830G.
No, no.
I think it should be higher.
Right, to catch up, to catch up.
There to do 10%. So I think you want it to be above and beyond what they can get by with the law. We're allowed to do that, Mike.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but when you start picking percentages, you really got to understand what each percent does to the profit motive for the developer. I mean, you don't want to strip the guy bare. They got, they got to make money, but still, if they want to play, if they want to play in that business, they're going to require to pony something up. But we're not here to, to, to prevent development from hap- happening. If you want to do it, here it is. Here's a percentage that, that would fall within the ability to make money and then move along. But if we say 20, 25%, the guy can't make any money, they're gone and we don't have any of that development. And I, I don't think that's what we're trying to do. So I'm, I'm trying to zero in on a percentage that makes business sense.
Zero.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, right.
Well, you know, Rich, I'm still not convinced. Uh, when you, when I look at a standard deviation and I look at 80% of the mean, that is still most of, of a very significant area under the curve. Meaning I'm not convinced that developers are losing money by building a house for $275,000 and selling it for $275,000. I mean, I don't know if it's affordable, but that's what the law calls it. I, I, I don't see that we're, we're hurting anybody at all.
You, you got to know what all the numbers look like before you can say that.
I, I grant you that, but I'm, I'm, one of the things that never came up in any of, uh, our meetings on 830G is anyone saying, oh, this is going to be a hardship. APG is anyone saying, oh, this is going to be a hardship too. They always, in fact, the more we ask for a higher percentage, they immediately said, oh, if that's what it takes, no problem.
Mike, are there organizations in existence that, um, concentrate on developing affordable housing units?
Well, Home, Home Connecticut can provide assistance to communities.
No, no, I mean, I mean a private investor, you know, a applicant. Is there somebody who, who feels, whether it's their, you know, social conscience or their economic pocketbook, that feels that an affordable housing development is, is the right thing to do? And that's what they do? Yeah, because what we're, what, the, the people that we've, um, talked to, uh, over the various applications, they begrudgingly go along with these percentages, okay? And I say begrudgingly, you know, they, they get, they get something out of it too. They get higher density and, and whatnot, okay? So more, more units per, per unit area. But there's got to be organizations out there who are looking to develop 100% affordable housing developments. And, and I'd like to, you know, at least put that in the table as, as, uh, something to explore. I, I don't know for sure. I have an inkling, okay? Because I heard this, my, one of, one of my son's friends interviewing for a company that invests in affordable housing units. So, uh, I don't know if that'll ever pan out to anything or help us, but yeah, I'm just looking for these novel ways or, um, yeah, not that we have to think them up, but what else is out there? You have a lot of good ones here, um, you know, and every one of them comes with resistance, uh, in one way or another. Yeah, I, I don't know, uh.
So Bill, a lot of the, the companies that I know that do this normally work with the town and they take, they get a subsidized piece of property from the town.
Yeah.
So this is, this is more likely to happen in a city like Hartford, New, um, uh, Bridgeport, that kind of thing where they have some open tracts of land, houses that have been demolished and it's all owned by the town, they want to get-
Yeah, but we have a lot of open space.
We have open space, but I don't think it's at the same pricing as what, what you're getting when you get it from, from the town because it's town owned. Oh, well, yeah, that space, I don't know how much of that would be available for that.
A lot of, a lot of-
That's a different question, sorry.
Yeah, no, a lot of it is, you can, I'm being a little absurd, okay? But, um, I'm, I'm just trying to point out the dichotomy I see in, in the population. Everybody, you know, loves the idea of affordable housing, yeah, we gotta do that. And then you put something on the table, it's like, you know, no, we don't like that. Or at least the, at least the neighbors say that.
Right.
You know, to me, to make a real dent in this, we have to come up with a way to have a, um, 90 or 100% of the units in the, in, in a subdivision qualify. And why, why, why fool around with 10%? Yeah, we already, we've already proven mathematically that that sets us back.
Great.
Mike, we had also talked about, uh, the town investing in, um, you know, uh, properties that have been abandoned, um, you know, and I know there's not a lot, but there are a few around town.
The tax sales?
Yeah, yeah.
That, um, that would be something that we could, um, look into. And add as, add as, added, added in on this, this chart here. Um, because you're right, this came up, uh, the one you're, I think, close to mine was that mountain road tax sale.
Yep.
Where there was, there was, there was a house that was sold and it was cheap for $50,000.
Yep.
Did that make it onto our list of affordable homes?
No, we got it, no, an investor bought it.
And it's not called government assisted when we sell it for such a price?
No.
Well, we didn't, we didn't sell it. Well, I guess, I guess, we sold it for the back taxes, right?
We did sell it, yeah, we sold it for the back taxes. It sold for, um, I want to say it was like 30 or $50,000.
And the town, the town possession, it repossessed it?
We, we took, we took it via a tax sale, um, and then we sold it and the person, uh, bought that, bought the property, demolished the existing home and built a new home in its place. You know, the value of the home was, you know, uh, prior to, prior to the demolition and rebuild, let's say it was a home that was valued at $175,000, that new home sold for 280, when all said and done. So she picked up a building lot between 30 and $50,000 to build a new home. And that, that was one, I know, I think, Bill, you brought it up during the referral for eight 24 referral to, with the Board of Selectmen, why not ask for an affordable, uh, unit deed restriction?
Yep.
And maybe that's something that goes in here is developing a policy that tax sales will have deed restrictions. Because when we sell a property via a tax sale, we can only sell, sell it for the, the taxes that are owed to the town, not anymore.
Yep. I'd like to see that one added to the list.
Yeah, I think it should be added too.
I think so.
I will add that.
No, you know, coming short of, um, yeah, I, I, I don't want, we, we can't put on the list, you know, create, create a, a section, you know, what, what's the low income housing, the section eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, you know, while we put in here, you know, develop a section eight housing somewhere in town.
Yeah, where Meadowview is. 300 acres.
Again, I'm, I'm using hyperbole a little bit, okay? But I'm trying to, I'm trying to get you guys to stretch your thoughts. You know, do we, do we really want to be pioneers in this planning? Or do we want to be the, you know, um, as Essex and Ridgefield and Salisbury did? Their objective was to show a plan that would move in the direction of achieving 10%. Again, Mike, input from the BOS is, is going to be-
Vital.
You know, uh, vital, yeah.
Um, Bill, to, to that end, uh, Simsbury is a bit of a pioneer in our Simsbury Housing Authority. And that is a, uh, oh, oh, a, an institution dedicated to low end, to, to affordable housing.
Yep.
And it is one of our, in, before we get to the recommendations, it's part of our, how we're going to meet our goals discussion.
Okay.
On page nine.
So what's your idea?
Well, I'm just saying, we, we could add that to it, to, I mean, it, it covers two bases that you talked about. Um, and organizations whose goal is to bu, build a high percentage of affordable units and, and something that's here in town that, that need, that, you know, had plans to expand, as I think Mike told us, but, um, for some reason, those plans have not been materialized.
Right, they, they explored an expansion years ago and just put it to, put it to, uh, to the side. I don't know the reason why they didn't explore the, uh, expansion plan.
All right, so Mike, you, you have that, you have that, uh, in, in the draft here.
On page nine.
Yeah, so here's just other concepts that maybe carry it over.
Yep.
And Holly's right, yeah, uh, uh, the Affordable, uh, the, the Housing Authority and Expansion.
And FAVR, it's, I think we said that FAVR, it's, it's not learning disabilities, it's really developmental disabilities.
Yeah, so Mike, here, you know, we've been kicking around some ideas and, uh, not, not all of these that you have here were in that, uh, that, that, uh, gold chart. Yeah.
Yep.
And I think they, they should probably all be summarized there. You know, we, we, we talked about rehabilitation of distressed properties. I think that's what I was talking about, yep.
Yep. So I'll move those, add those to the chart. The multifamily housing, yes, no?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll put that also on the chart.
Mike, at this point, the duplexes are not allowed in Simsbury?
Unless it's on, via the cluster zone regulations or, well, three ways, cluster zone, village design districts or eight 30J.
Uh huh.
Um, no, I'm sorry, I'm missing one, workforce overlay housing.
Town center code.
Town center code duplex, well, town center code is multifamily, it's allowed.
Okay, okay.
Um, there's no specific call out. It, it's more of a town center, if it was a new development, which would be limited to the only section of the town center that could have, um, um, what do you call it? Uh, duplexes sort of development would be probably the Gerard Sinncroft, uh, property. Otherwise, uh, residential uses are not permitted on the ground floor.
Okay.
So I'm going to carry over them, these, these concepts or, or recommendations from page nine onto the chart.
Yes.
Do we want to talk about who's the, uh, what party should be involved in this? Um, like, the responsible party, kind of, if we go into the chart, like the rehab of distressed properties, that would probably, that would mainly be a Board of Selectmen, uh, action.
Mike, I think you know better than this committee, no, this commission.
No, no, if you're, you're okay with it, I'll do that, I'll do that.
Yeah, do that, Mike, and, um, when the BOS replies with any of their input, that's going to be integral to our next steps.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just looking at Essex's plan again and, man, they, they had some very specific developments, you know, identified, uh, where they could go.
Right.
How many, how many units there would be.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not sure how they did that.
So they, they, their consultant is also the town planner there?
Uh huh.
So the consultant and their affordable housing commission, um, looked at some of these. So this is, I guess it's been an ongoing conversation, eight 30J just forced them to put it to paper.
Oh, okay, okay.
They, so they kind of already had a direction, but you know, that also speaks to here the investigating incentive housing zones in, in town, you know, as one of our goals, because there, there's an option. There was an incentive housing zone proposal years ago, um, which can get specific.
Yeah.
Bill, I am happy with the, with the rest of these items on this list, um, and the priority level that is attached to each one. So I know we talked about going down, but I'm just trying to see if, you know, if there's any that people strongly disagree with, but I for one am in agreement with all the ones, the remaining ones on this list.
Okay. We're gonna add a few.
I'm withholding comment on the dates because I don't know whether they are realistic.
On the second to the last one, can we put explore training options available for staff and commissioners?
Yep. All right, so maybe, um, ask people, do a little homework before, uh, before the next meeting. Use your own search methods and see what you can come up with for any, any other types of, uh, means to improve or increase the number of affordable housing units that have been either put into, put into, uh, operation or just proposed. And I don't, you know, it doesn't matter what, what state it's from, I'm, I'm just curious, I'm going to do it myself, you know, uh, and, and we don't need to make up stuff if other municipalities have already, already done the work for us. I'd like to think outside the box a little bit, um, and, and just, you know, see, see what you come back with. Maybe, maybe it'll be something that really resonates with you, maybe, maybe you won't find anything, I don't know. Uh, and Mike had asked that for the next meeting, uh, if you could have the, the revised draft, uh, ready for our, uh, use.
Yes, yes, I will.
So Bill, would we be looking at that first meeting in October or the second meeting? What is?
I'm not ready to commit to any listening session at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to figure-
Well, I agree, I don't think, I mean, yeah, I just know people are asking me for the date because they want to post it and people, I mean, I've gotten texts and emails, so, um, that's, oh.
Yeah, it's not going to happen on the 22nd, I can, I can-
No, I agree, I, I wouldn't want to, I mean, that's why I said in the beginning, I don't feel comfortable without us taking a look at it.
And I, I, it, it, I, I do think that, um, people's expectations of what this is going to be, it might be a little, I don't know, uh, maybe, maybe they're expecting, um, something a little more and we're going to deliver.
Yeah, I agree.
Bill, does, Bill or maybe to the commission as a whole, do you want to, like, so I'm going to work, I'm going to wrap up my changes to this, this plan based on tonight's discussion, but do you also want me to take a stab at just, even if it's just an outline of a PowerPoint and how, how we're going to handle this listening session, at least from what we'll present to the public?
Yeah, fir, first priority, Mike, is, is-
Just finish up what we discussed tonight?
Yes, please. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't want the, uh, I don't want the PowerPoint to interfere with that. But if you do get it done and you have a chance to do, uh, the PowerPoint, yeah, that'd be great too. And I want everybody also to think about, you know, what, what's our real goal? Um, is it to, is it to move in the direction, like, let's say we have a short term and a long term goal. What do you want it to be? I'll, I'll give you mine, I don't have it formulated yet, but I will, I'll share it with everybody, hopefully before the next meeting. And I might do a couple, um, you know, just to kind of, uh, instigate some, some, uh, conversation. Okay, you guys know my attention span. Up, eight 30, perfect. Um, but let's, let's table this for now. We got some marching orders, Mike's gonna fix up the, the draft, um, and commissioners, I'd ask that, that you look, uh, do a, a search of, you know, whatever you're comfortable with and see if you can come up with some, um, ideas that we haven't, uh, talked about. And then also think about what you think the short term and, uh, and long term goals of the affordable housing plan should be. You know, it's clear, it's clear from, uh, the statutes that the goal is to achieve 10% affordable housing in, in each municipality. Um, and if you think that's the right thing, okay, no problem. Um, if you think it should be something else, let, let's talk about it. Because I think that will, that will, um, kind of, um, you know, formulate the content of our plan. Good, Alan, you still with us?
I am.
Okay, good. Uh, Mike, any- Uh, Mike, any correspondence? Any, any applications on the horizon?
No.
All right, yeah, we, we need, I, I'd love to get this, this effort done before anything is, is submitted, which will kind of rail our efforts. So I do, I do have, you know, a desire to get this done. But of course, I want it to be done with, with a lot of, a lot of thought, so. Not gonna rush it per se, just for the, the sake of getting it done.
I appreciate that.
I've, I've mentioned to a number of people that the Planning Commission is discussing this and to have a, there'll be an, an open here, a listening session. And there's a, as you might imagine, there's a great deal of interest in this. And a great deal of, you know, that's what the planning commi-, you know, sort of go get them kind of feeling.
Yeah.
Get the town, you know, that would benefit from something like this.
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna come up short on their expectations, but if their expectations are unreasonable.
Yeah, then we can't meet it.
Right. Because, you know, I, you know, I told you guys, Eric Wellman sent me a note and he, he said something about, hey, given the current environment of what's going on in the nation, maybe this will be a good opportunity to, to, you know, affect some change. And I didn't, I, I told him, well, you know, we'll be having a listening session. I, I didn't respond directly to him, whether that, we're gonna do that or not. Certainly, that's not the intent of, of the, of the statute, but
That's right.
You know, if, if that's what the town wants to do, maybe we can do it. I for one, you know, would not go that direction, but like I told you before, I'll go the way the, the commission wants to go.
You might be talking about apples and oranges. So this is a plan and they might want to do something more, but maybe it's something else. Do you know what I mean? Like, maybe it's two documents, not one, so I.
But Eric sees this as an opportunity.
But I, I agree with you, Bill, in the sense that I, I agree with him, it would be nice to address, you know, issues that we're facing in, in, in the state and the country or whatever. But I don't want this to become a political document that addresses something when 830G doesn't address that. So I, that's what I, you know, I just think we need to be careful about that. And that's why I'm saying, if they want to do something, let's say they want to do A, and this is B, well, they can do A, but it doesn't necessarily mean it, it, it could be two different processes that it ends up coming out of this. And I, I, I get what you're saying and I get what he wants to do, but this might not be the avenue to do what he wants to do based on what the statute is telling us.
Yeah, well, this is why I'm looking for the input from the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Specific from.
Right, if they come back and say, hey, look, we want you to, you know, comply with 8-30G, okay, that's pretty clear.
Right.
All right, it, it, you know, to me, but I'm sure the, again, the, the waters could get muddied quickly. But okay, I, I think that's a key ingredient here.
But I think if we do kind of what Julie had suggested and why is it important to the citizens of Simsbury that we do this? We might be able to put something, you know, I think there's, hopefully there's some middle ground and we can look at this as why is this important and maybe from that we get some input. You know?
Yep.
You know, Aaron, you're talking about middle ground, but we haven't received nothing. I mean, right now, there's no grounds coming from the BOS.
No, no, I, I.
We haven't, we only asked them recently.
Right, and I think Michael said they were gonna take it up at their next meeting.
It will be, yeah, they won't receive it till they get their next packet. So your correspondence will go, will, will, will go out Friday this week.
Yeah.
In the next packet for next week.
Yeah, we'll get something.
So I'm sure you get a reaction minimum. You'll get something.
We'll get something.
I'm sure it's gonna be pretty low on specifics.
Well, let's see what they say.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea. Bill had a good idea to reach out to them to see and make sure.
Yeah, well, it wasn't my idea really.
You can take credit for it, Bill.
Any, any other subjects that commissioners have any comments about?
No, but I miss seeing people in person.
Yeah, I do too, Erin. I do.
You know, I, I mean, this is great. It's a great option, but it's like, wow, I mean, I just didn't think we'd still be here months ago, right? So I, I do miss the, the in-person.
So, so we've asked the question of council, like, when, when could we go back? As long as there is a prohibition or, or shouldn't say prohibition, as long as there's still a cap of 25 people for indoor gathering, we cannot have a me, in-person meeting.
Yeah, I get it.
Because, because the problem is with, when person number 26 walks through the door, the meeting's canceled, because if we continue the meeting, we violate their due process.
Yeah.
Yep. No, I totally get it. I'm just, you know, making a comment. I just miss seeing my fellow commissioners person.
Agreed.
And staff, town staff.
Agreed. Staff agrees.
Okay, then I guess that's about it. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Holly makes the motion, okay.
I second.
That was Erin.
Yes.
Holly moves. Erin second. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, 600. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, commissioners.